All right, it is six o'clock, so I'm going to open the vote of selectmen's meeting for May 16th. This is being recorded and broadcasted on 192, but unfortunately, I guess it's not going to be on Zoom. So we can just start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First off, I'd like to welcome our newest member of the select board, Tom Galvin. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thomas Galvin, I live at Grizzly Drive, and I wanted to thank everyone out there that wrote me in on this election. I hope I can make you proud.
Well, happy to have a full board again. All right, first on the agenda is approval of the Treasury warrant 22W-23 and payroll 22PW-23.
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Wait one second.
Roll call.
Clock eye.
The noy die. Wait minute.
And nickel's eye excluding COA wages and election wages. All right, and next is approval of the meeting minutes for May 2nd.
Still moved.
Wait one second.
Any comments or questions?
I just want to, I should exclude myself from anything police-related or safe place.
For the warrant.
For the warrant.
Okay. Make a note of that, too, please. And then when we sign it, I just write next to it, exclude those wages on this one. So vote on the minutes.
Clock eye.
The noy die. Wait minute.
Next hand.
And nickel's eye. Thank you. All right, and we'll go right to department heads, and first on, whoops, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, public comment, well, there's nobody to conduct, well, unless somebody else in the audience here. Do you have a public comment?
Course I do.
Oh, geez.
That's right, that's right.
Oh, geez. And do you have a couple pages to?
Try to keep it under.
I was so close.
Jeff Stelling, 3, Lord Lane. I just wanted, as a member of the public, to congratulate Tom Galvin. Thank you for stepping up when nobody pulled papers for the select committee seat. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I noticed on your agenda tonight, you have boards and commissions, and I figured it would be an opportunity to come in and just give you a quick brief on where I stand on two of the boards and commissions that I'm on. As you know, I will be no longer a resident of Rutland as of July 15th, so I'm going to need to vacate my seats on the Historical Commission and also the 300th Anniversary Committee. And if you are taking up reappointments, I would be willing to stay on as an ex officio, non-voting member on both of those commissions, as I currently maintain the Historical Commission's social media page, and nobody has expressed interest in taking that over, so I'm willing to continue with that until somebody steps up as an ex officio. And also on the 300th Anniversary Committee, I am prepping the concerts on the Common for every Friday, and I'll be willing, or I'll be prepared to turn that over to Sandra Thomas and Barbara Campbell after July 15th to take us through into the fall. But if you want to keep me on as an ex officio so that I can continue to liaison with the bands, I'd be happy to do so.
We're actually gonna, we're only ratifying the Finance Committee because they need to be activated.
Okay.
But we'll do our reappointments or appointments in June, but we're certainly making up the.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to be upfront on that, and also just another pitch, as I see that you have boards and commissions on there, Managed Growth Steering Committee still stays vacant. I'd like to see maybe some action on that because the five-year sunset will be sunsetting in 2024, and you're going to need to plan whatever your next round is, so please consider resurrecting the Managed Growth Steering Committee on your boards and appointments. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm going to stop in this room.
Dick Williams, 35, Overlook. I am not going to read the whole list, but this one here, it does bother me, so therefore I'm bringing it to you. Dunkin' Donuts. Way back when it went through the zoning vote of appeals, it went to court and everything else, and it was stated that it will have wood siding on that building. And it is there, and to me, it is not being done. I feel that the town should have stepped up and told them as such, and I'd like to know where the town of Rutland is going to take this. Are they going to make them put wood siding on as they had board, a previous board had done all the work to do it? Because I just, I feel that it should be.
I have a question also. Wasn't there something with the color also, the color of the exterior or not?
If it was a color.
I can clarify. Go ahead. Through the chair. Jeff Stelling, 3, Lord Lane. So on our committee with the Historical Commission, one of the earlier meetings, we did look at Dunkin' Donuts because somebody had raised that question that they thought it was supposed to mirror the building that it left, specifically white. And we were surprised, and I think Anita, you pulled it for us.
Right.
It didn't say it.
That's not.
I think it was a wives' tale that we thought it had to be white, and I think it said, might have said wood cedar shakes, but check again, check with Anita, it wasn't as we thought. I think that was just a wives' tale. It does not have to be white.
No, but it has to be wood.
But I believe that was it, it had to be cedar or something like that, but a town clerk had that, she was able to pull that up. I could probably pull it up again on the.
Isn't that the planning board that enforced that? None of us.
I don't know the building inspector.
Yeah, but they, you know. I gotta, not the nut, much, but I think you being on that board, you should be going after the planning board to enforce them rules and regulations you put on it. That's the building department and whatever. Oh, yeah. Don't tell me no. It's the planning board that wants the stuff done.
It was actually ZBA that had the hearing, and those are the files that we pulled.
Well, it's, yeah, everybody throws at the select board, you know, it's really not, yeah, it'd be nice if we could do something about it, but we don't. We have a building inspector that needs to go looking at it, and if that's the case, then he should enforce it, but.
So Gary, if you can just check, have the building inspector check with Anita and look at the specs, and then.
I will. Can I ask Mr. Williams a question? Dick, have you seen what they filed for when they put forth the building permit?
No.
So you haven't seen that?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to take a look at that tomorrow and see what it says.
Okay.
All right. And also, we should probably refer to the original building permit for way back when? Okay.
Original and all the court cases.
Jeff, you open it.
Jeff Stelling. So through the Historical Commission and correspondence with our town clerk, this was, town clerk read through the decision of the ZBA filed in June of 1999, and from what her opinion was, there's no restriction on what color it has to be, it only says that the building has to have, quote, "wood clapboard siding."
Correct.
That's from the ZBA.
I'm sorry, Mr. Stone, what year was that?
June 3rd, 1999, Rutland ZBA decision. Wood clapboard siding.
And that's the original building permit for the building?
Whatever the ZBA decision would be.
It was a ZBA decision. We have those in the office if you.
Dick, did you have anything else on your list, or are you just going to pass it in?
That's the only thing I'm going to bring up. The rest is a platinum pack. I'm excited to do a little bit of work down there, and hopefully a scout project coming up.
Okay, great. Does anybody else have a public comment? All right, thank you. All right, so we will go to the department heads, and Anita, our town clerk.
As of today, Rutland's population is 9,470 residents with 6,618 active voters and 355 inactive voters, along with 2,497 non-voters, which includes minors. We often, we use the term inactive voters because those are voters who we know have left town because of real estate transfers, things like that, and we send notices to them, but we can't take a voter off without a confirmation, return confirmation from them over like a two-year cycle, so that's why we do list inactive voters. But that said, only 84 voters, registered voters turned up at the annual town meeting on Saturday, May 7th, and we thank all those voters that did show up, and only 565 voters cast their ballots at the annual town election on May 9th, so that equates to well under 9% of registered voters. And unfortunately, the voter turnout isn't unique to Rutland. Other towns have tried different things to, you know, get the numbers up and get people more interested, but not really sure what we could do. So I just wanted to also mention along with the election is that prior to last week's election on Mondays, we had several people notify our office that they were running write-in campaigns. So as customary, at the end of the evening after we closed the polls at 8:00, we went through, our election workers worked in teams, and we went through and polled all ballots and went through and tallied any write-in votes, even if you remember when you vote, there's a little circle that you can fill in with the write-ins that kicks it into a different compartment, but we review all of them. So the ballots didn't need to have that circle filled in, home addresses weren't necessary, and spelling didn't have to be exact. We use something that the state calls voter intent, and if our election workers could figure out who they, you know, who they were referring to, we gave those votes to the candidates. So I also want to really thank my, our dedicated group of election workers. We've got, some of them have been with us for 18-plus years, and they're really much appreciated and help us, including Nancy, help us get through very really long election The other thing I wanted to do is a little plug for the town website. I don't know, I think most people here know, but there's a, on the homepage, there's a little blue connect button, that if you click on that, you can sign up for email blasts that range from anything from when real estate taxes are due, water sewer bills, to activities that are going on in town. Residents can also sign up for alerts from specific departments so that they are aware when an agenda is posted or meeting minutes are posted. So it's a valuable asset on the website. And there's also a link under that connect button that links to Rutland Community Television's YouTube channel, and all past town meetings and committee meetings are all available for review there. So also, we, as most of you are aware, per the State Ethics Commission, any, all town board and committee members are considered municipal employees under the Conflict of Interest law. Tom already found that out. And all members along with all town employees are required to take the online ethics training every two years, and our office has started our review of those who are due to take the training and has been sending out reminders. We also were recently notified by the State Ethics Commission that they're developing a new online training program, but they haven't given us an idea of when it's going to replace the one that we've all been taking since 2012. But so as of now, the old version is still in place. And besides the online training information, all newly elected town officials, our officers are presented with information regarding the online testing requirements and a copy of the open meeting law requirement, and we log, we log signed receipts for the information and that's in our office along with the certificate of completion for the online testing. And according to the State Ethics Commission, one of the improvements they're going to be making, hopefully, is that when some, after you've taken your test, you won't need to print the certificate of completion. They're going to, they're going to log it, and clerk's offices will be able to go in, it seems like, and just double-check and send out reminders, so hopefully that'll be in place soon. Also, Becky wanted me to mention that all new town employees also receive employment packets that, from the Treasurer's Office, with sign-off sheets for six different town policies that include sexual harassment, electronic communication, cell phone use, social media networking, employee code of professional conduct, and workplace violence. So last week, Becky and I did a review to see what we have on the town website, and three of them are there along with code of conduct for boards and committees and the application process for boards and committees. So we're looking to get the other three policies on the website next week, and.
So that's been in place for a while, Anita?
What's that?
Signing off on all of those?
Yep, for quite a while.
Okay. So most employees should be up to date, other than unless they're new, right?
Yeah, I think Becky's been doing that for probably close to eight years, I think, so since she came on board, so that she does have.
Precipitation.
So the only other thing that I wanted to mention is that the special act of the legislature, which brought us remote Zoom meetings during COVID, the legislation is set to expire on July 15th, and I haven't, we haven't been, received anything from the state as to what's going to take place, whether that's just going to go away or whether they're working on something else. That's about it.
I'm going to go, sorry. Anita, thank you guys in your office and all the election workers and everything for all the work over town meeting and then through the election. I know the election, especially with all the write-ins and stuff, was a little, although the turnout was not what we wanted, it was a lot of work, so thank you. Looking at the surrounding towns, it looked like their voter turnout for Election Day was closer to the 15% to 20%, and I think ours, I think you had said it's like not even nine. Do you think that that's because other, because there was not, our ballot was just, there wasn't much on the ballot, or?
I do, and I think a lot of ballot questions will bring out voters, too. And I think it was one that there weren't, you know, there weren't any really contested races other than the one, you know, so.
And similar for the first town meeting, do you have any inclination, was it the earlier start? Was it, I mean, did you get any feedback or anything? I haven't heard any, like.
No, we talked about that, but I'm not sure. I think it might have helped in some instances, but I think it might have hurt because parents, where our kids are still on the soccer field or on the baseball diamond, but I think the other thing is, is that there weren't, it didn't get the parents out because the dollar figure for the school was what they were asking for, so I think that that's probably more of the turnout, but, so.
And I know from when we came in to vote, that there was the feeding mechanism on the machine was having issues, so.
Library?
Yeah.
Yep.
So will that be a repair? I mean, is that something that we should have on our radars, that our voting machines are kind of at the point that they need to eat? I'm looking forward thinking for the.
Our machines are relatively new, and they're maintained once a year. We ended up having to call LHS, it's our vendor, and while we were on the phone with them, they walked us through how to pull the cards out of the one machine that was causing the problems and reinsert it into our spare machine, so we didn't lose a beat in the count. And luckily, no, we didn't have any voters waiting in line, because it did take us a few minutes to do that. We always have the officer present to observe what we're doing, and LHS was great, they walked us through everything, they encouraged us. Like our precinct wardens maintain a, warden's notes or clerk's notebook, and they encouraged us to write down every step, because like we seal the cards once we've tested the ballots, so they had us write down that we, you know, pulled out, cut the seals, replaced them, resealed them, and every step is logged, so. It was actually a good learning experience during a slow election, so if it had happened at a presidential, we probably would have been panicking, but, and LHS is, they're going to have someone come out, they think the rollers just weren't advancing, so, on that machine, but we didn't have trouble at the other precincts.
Yeah, I mean, when we were voting, we knew you were going to get the spare, and it wasn't a concern on that side, but I was thinking more on the maintenance expense side of machines, just kind of going forward, you know, so.
No, I think, I think our machines, they're probably six years old, and so they have a long life. We had our last ones, I think, for 15 years, so they're, I think they're in pretty good shape. However, I don't know why, we didn't have, we always test all the machines before the elections, and we did have, we tested, I think, 35 ballots, and we did have one with the same problem that day at the, with the library, but, so, but now we're aware of it, and they're going to come in and replace that for us, so.
Well, you said it was a good learning experience on a slow election, so, thank you.
Does anybody else have anything for Anita? Thank you. Next department head is Council on Aging, Anita.
Hello. Last time I was here, and I don't remember, sometime in the last year, but I think typically I've reported on, you know, what we're doing, activities that have increased, people came back, but I thought it was really important. This time, just give a really good idea of what Council on Aging is actually doing, because I don't think that there's. That people know as much as we do. So that board is just newly purchased from our friends, sorry. I just brought it.
Kind of the size of the vacuum cleaner, aren't you?
But it has, can I come up a little? Has the mission statement that appears on our monthly newsletter, the little picture, living your life well in Rutland, which is also one of our newsletters. You might need your help again, Gary. I also brought some handouts, just so you can get an idea, this is tiny writing, I apologize, it's just our piece of the budget, which is literally a piece. Just to give you a comparison, and then what I did was, I'm sorry, I don't have one for everybody in the audience, but I'm going to read through it anyways. This is just some notes I've made, which is really what I'm going to talk about, and then I have a printout from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs, which is who we work But the reason that I'm doing it this way is just because we've gone through a lot in the last couple of years with COVID. As everybody knows, this population is very, kind of, well, it was the most affected, it was negatively affected, not only with everything else that everybody else suffered from with COVID, but it made them afraid and isolated. Isolated increases dementia of all kinds. Alzheimer's is a form of dementia, but not all the types, it's not the only one. We have, we found out last year, working for the first time doing the Alzheimer's Walk, which they do in October, we participated in, you're welcome, and found out that Rutland has the highest, one of the highest incidents of Alzheimer's in the state. So, and we see it more and more every single day, and the really difficult part is, it's very fast progressing in the cases that we see. So we do the best we can, we probably get in any given day, the five days during the week 20, what we call outreach calls, which is somebody, Jim may need a piece of durable medical equipment because they just got out of the hospital, so they need a wheelchair or commode, or, you know, a lot of them are, I need help. You know, my parents need a lot more than they used to, they need help getting meals, or they're going to rehab, and we don't know if they're going to come out of rehab without having to go into a nursing home, or my parents are at home and they just can't do the things they used to do. They can't cook the meals because when you get to a certain age, it's difficult, it's hard to clean vegetables, chop vegetables, prepare vegetables, and not everybody has their children either near or their children that have the time available to prepare that stuff for them. Since COVID, you know, sometimes your elder services is the organization, I should, I kind of talk fast sometimes in a circle, I apologize for that, but if you read this sheet that I did, there's a National Council on Aging, and then there are Massachusetts Council on Agings, and then the municipalities, which we are one, work underneath them, so it just kind of streamlines down, and we try and provide these services in the middle that you see, and a lot more. So, I forgot what I was saying with that one thing, but anyways, home health agencies, for example, since COVID, they're understaffed. Nobody, people were told to stay home, then they were afraid to come back, then they were thought they were going to get COVID or they were going to give COVID, so everyone is understaffed. Nursing homes and rehabs are understaffed. Home health agencies are understaffed, so even now that we're seeing the ability to have the services come back into place, people are being awarded services, they can't find the help to give them. The family doesn't necessarily have the time, or sometimes it's the willingness to do it. We've had neighbors call, I look around this room, I think just about everybody in here has either inquired or taken advantage of some of the things that we have to offer. But I just, I feel like, and I think a lot of us do, two of my members are here, they've been on Friends Board, Board of Directors, volunteers, we don't, we can get them to resources that we don't have in-house, right? So we don't have home health agencies, we're not an adult daycare center. What do we do? We get them to the resources they need, or we provide them with presentations, with programmings to educate them, or we have daily activities where they can come in. Exercise is one of the biggest draws for us, and it's really important, because what I tell people is, if you stop moving, you stop moving. So it's really, really important to have that stuff. That being said, the reason why I gave you the piece of our budget is because if you look at that budget, $60,000, I think, and 52 of it is salary, and it's salary for what the town funds 39 hours. That's not even one full-time person. So I'm paid by the town for 23, I have an outreach worker that's paid for 16, I pull five additional hours paid for by a grant that every Council on Aging gets. Ours is a little under $14,000 per year, which is so minimal, but yet, other than the salary, you look at the other lineups, and we get purchase services of under $6,000, $1,400 in supplies, and the other account is for a Mass Council on Aging dues that we pay, which means if we go to a conference, or, you know, they're going to send out some kind of supplies, we get it at that member rate, okay? But we're really, especially now, I think we've always been struggling, but especially now, more and more people are coming for help. I literally have a line out the outreach door just in the last couple of weeks, just for fuel, okay? And these are not people that I would normally see come for fuel, these are a lot of people who could before pay their bills, just like all of us. So we don't know where it's going to come from. Our Friends Group has fundraisers and raises money, and they do have a separate fund that they sell raffle tickets for every year, so that helps a little, but what used to be a gift of, say, $100 to buy 100 gallons, is now a $400 to $500 gift. And I just, I want to make everybody aware of all of that that we do, what's on this paper that we do, and I'll read it for some of you guys, but we support, provide, provide and support services to elders, families, and caregivers in the community, okay? We're a local agency. We serve as elder advocates. We offer services such as outreach, what could be anything. Like I said, from borrowing a piece of equipment to really trying to get somebody in this person's home because they're alone. So when they're alone and they can't get their own food, who's going to bring it to them? We have Meals on Wheels or we have to try and get maybe some kind of a community volunteer that might help them go to the grocery store. Again, neighbors might come and help them. But that only goes so far. What happens if that neighbor moves away? What happens if their adult children move away? Sadly, I think a lot of people don't realize until they're in the situation. And I say this personally, and I know people in this room. If you've been blessed enough to have an elderly family member or friend in your life, as long as they have been, then you see it. And you're one of the people that is thankful you can do it for them. But sadly, as a nation, I think we see our elderly and our young children and our disabled as a burden and not a blessing. And I think it trickles down even here. You know, I feel sometimes I try and do the best at any job I have. So if I didn't have this job and I worked with kids, I'd put just as much effort into doing that. But sometimes I feel like there's not enough of an understanding. And I think the people in the council feel the same way too. Those that come every day, they consider it a home away from home. That it's some kind of competition, you know, that other people in the town, what do they get? I've heard comments as nasty as seniors don't contribute anything to the budget. We've literally heard that. And that's from people who really don't know what's going on. So I thought, we'll start here and we'll let everybody that comes here know what's going on. But we need a lot of help there because our community needs the help. So I think we ask every year, you know, we need to increase the budget. We're like less than one percent trying to service twenty percent or almost twenty because that sixteen hundred figure is probably closer to two thousand now. You know, twenty, twenty five percent of our population. And there should be a place for them to go and relax and have fun and coffee. We do anything. We have chair tanning. We have watercolor. We have exercise. We have a wee bowling team. But that's just the fun stuff. That's not the need that's there. And we get people every day and more and more. And I've got sixteen hours of outreach help to try and get back to all these people. And these are just the ones we hear about because they can get in the door or somebody calls for them. There's so many more that a lot of councils have enough of an outreach department to literally reach out, you know, call everybody, starting from the oldest down. We barely have time to do that. I mean, we did it during COVID because nobody was coming in the building and there was some downtime. And we felt we had to. And then this population steps up. When the vaccine clinic first started, my volunteer team of ten people was comprised of all of those seniors, probably seventy five plus, and two community members. One young man who serves on a lot of boards and committees and one woman from DPW who gave their personal time to register all of those seniors for their vaccines. So I guess going forward, I know there's not money now, but if we could look at this and try and fix it a little bit, add to it. Because I think it's important. So I'm off on a little bit of a tangent now. Does anybody have any questions?
Through the chair. I was just curious, the community center senior center. Is that just used by seniors now or is that open to everybody?
It's it's been just used in the last three years. It was closed for a while, then it was opened up slowly. Typically, there were recreation classes that will come in four or five o'clock till maybe eight o'clock in the evening. And not every, not every day. There might be a different class Monday, Tuesday than there are.
For seniors or?
No, 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 for for recreation, which some seniors go to those classes. And then they've done certain events. Scouts used to use it. They really don't anymore. The Easter egg hunt has been held there.
Well, I know the girl scout event was incredibly popular.
Which one?
The one where the babysitting night?
Oh, yeah, that.
I mean, parents, they, there were tons and tons and tons.
Honestly, I haven't heard anything about it. It did stop during COVID. And a lot, you know, I don't know because nobody honestly approached me about it since. I don't, and a lot of times it was utilized, the girl scouts have not approached me. I think even after that, I had one girl scout group that met there. That was, that was.
Well, I know it was incredibly popular and even for something like voting or town meetings. If we could have that space for babysitting so the people could vote.
The tough part is, and some people don't understand, I don't think I understood it at first, like there's some kind of a stigma in the town, you know, like seniors don't like kids or which is kind of stupid. But one lady explained it to me and it made sense. She said the pool, for example. They would like, some seniors would swim a lot, would like, can they have just an hour or two by themselves in the morning? And this woman had her grandson all the time. She took him to the beach. And I said, she said, somebody said, it was mentioned to me that I didn't like kids and that's why I wanted my own, but it's not that at all. It's just that when you're in a small area and kids are running around, which they often do, I'm afraid to fall if someone runs into me. So there's miscommunication there. And I think the same thing was happening with the building. Because as one person actually told us, it's a home away from home for the seniors. To other people, it's a building to hold classes in or a building to have babysitting in. But seniors consider it a home away from home. And because of the structure of the building and the way it's set up, there's a lot of wasted space. That whole middle area is great if you have a big event, which we have two a year. Or if you had, you know, voting or something like that. But on a day to day basis, the acoustics are terrible. So we've had to utilize really the outside perimeter, you know, inside the building, but that outside for office space, particularly now. We run out of space to hold things that give the seniors not only the social distancing that we had to have with the privacy. So if I have a counselor that comes in, now we have support groups. I had nowhere to put them anymore because you can no longer really put two groups in the same space and give them the privacy that they need.
Now, that building has a working kitchen, right?
It has a working kitchen. That's actually been done now, redone.
But I'm even thinking for revenue for trying to come up with more events to raise money.
For, I don't know, because that was brought up in the past too. And I know that when we talked to Jackie O'Brien, there were different insurance issues that you couldn't say who use it as a function hall. It had something to do with the insurance. And I quite honestly, I don't know that you'd want to because we have put so much into that building with the help of volunteers, volunteers from Worcester County Sheriff's Department because we have little or no money. And I think the same thing that comes up all the time. You know, can we build a new building for recreation? Can we utilize this building for all these purposes is that there's no money to maintain it. So if you use it for all those purposes, unless you do it for something that really generates enough revenue to constantly keep it up, then you're just kind of doing it and, you know, it's wearing faster than it should. And if we don't have any money to fix it, what do we do? And that's always the hindrance, I think, in this town. We need to find a way to make the money work, earn money for us. And I don't, I don't think we're there yet or we could be there. But right now, just using it for a bunch of things, I think it'll get run down like it did before. Because this group with the volunteers and recently tax workout program, we have three guys that have been in there doing tremendous things. I don't know. I mean, I think there's a lot of things that we need. I think there's so much work that needs to be done in all the buildings. How do we do it and how do we raise the money to do it and keep it up? That's a huge job.
Oh, absolutely.
Through the chair, Harry Second, thirteen B true. Can the select board, or you tell me Nancy, the town received over two million dollars in American recovery rescue funds. Did any rescue go to you?
Well, some of the CARES Act money before that helped us with the kitchen.
Okay.
Okay.
But I'm talking about this one.
It was supposed to go part of it towards roof and siding for both the library and the community center, but I don't know that that's going to happen now because I think some of it was dependent on part of those funds, part of free cash. And the way we understood it before the whole changeover is different than the way I understand it now.
So what you're saying is you have such a need, but none of that money that you know of went to you. Does anybody in the board know? Because to be honest with you, I don't know where the ARPA committee is. I don't know who sits on it. So I don't know.
Come on it. That's why I tell you, there was money designated. A lot of money, a lot of money came for fuel, which we didn't expect the increase in cost, right? DPW deficits.
Yeah, a lot of water and sewer.
Water and sewer.
A lot of it went to DPW. A lot of those ones.
A lot of, I mean, it had started going to DPW when we were told it had to be very specific bucket. So it went to water main upgrades and then internet upgrades off Wachusett or down to the
The water, the water.
To the council on aging and down to the water. And then once the funding kind of opened up, I think that there was more concerted effort to involve the, some of the town building repairs and everything that needed to be done. And then with the massive budget deficits to close out this year with the snow and ice and fuel and kind of the, all of that, the unexpected increases in the cuts that the budget had suffered plus the increase in expenses of the cost of due of goods, some of it went for that. So I think there's still money available. I don't know where ARPA committee has sat with that yet.
We haven't really had another meeting, but the part that you were referring to, I think you were referring to was the tie in from the community center to the sewer because it still is on septic, if I'm correct, right?
There was also internet.
That did not happen.
No, no, no. I was talking about the internet upgrade, the, to bring was supposed to be high speed to the community center down from this and down to the water treatment plant. So that could be, because that had been on like old school DSL to bring it up to speed so it could be more automated. And we were told it was going to go to the community center also because Glenwood has it. So it was going to come, the school has it. So I think if I.
That was what we were told. If it was going to go down to the, the water.
Right.
They were going to also tap into the other.
Right.
And I don't know that those buckets of, I know why they used them first, but I don't know that they were specific, you could only use them. My interpretation of it, it was, there'd be no questions asked if you did use those buckets. So that was the easiest way to utilize some of that. The other toilets came up because they, you have over so many people in that building. That's the other issue with using it for a lot. They don't, they don't, the flushing mechanisms don't work. So I know there was a quote that came in for just over six thousand dollars to replace all of the toilets. That's twelve toilets. Also, there's really not a whole lot of handicap accessible.
The reason I asked that question was Nancy sends stuff to our CIPC committee all the time. And we look at it, we try to evaluate it, but we know many times the town doesn't have any money. So in our submission to the finance committee board, we had a certain number of items. And then we said, here are other items that we'd like to see if there are additional funds through either ARPA or through our free cash to fund some of those things. So I didn't know if any ARPA money went to Nancy. So that was kind of the question because we struggle with our capital improvement planning committee every year to try to get the money for the various departments and committees for what they need. And this seemed to be like a godsend, if you will, and yet she got nothing. So that was my question.
If I may, to the chair?
Yes. Hi, Harry. Nice to see you again.
Oh.
Just so you know, I'll just give you a brief rundown. Total of projects approved by the Board of Selectmen that were sent to, off to them, request for approval was one point one million. The first year of ARPA funds, we received one point three. Second year, which is this August, we receive another one point three. Right now, our checkbook balance is roughly two hundred thousand dollars. So most of the items that we've spent it on may include all departments, all facilities, broadband, as Leah has stated. Of course, and they've also stated the snow and ice deficit, some seasonal help cruiser, cruiser payments. The gear for the turnout gear for the fire department. But we look at all those things and my concern has been, as everybody knows, that this money is going to end on December of twenty five, December thirty first, twenty twenty five. We don't know if anything is going to come after that. So we really have to be very careful, but I do appreciate your questions and concerns as I do appreciate funding for everybody that we can, that we can give it to. Thank you. Appreciate it.
One other thing, Tom, you reminded me of when you said, like, the babysitting was popular. Is it, you said, is it only used for seniors? Because that's been a recent thing that has gone, and I don't really pay any attention to Facebook because I don't think it should be a platform that should be used. But anyways, I hear what goes on there. And so I think there's a lot of talk that that building's only for seniors. No one ever said that other than when COVID happened. And when COVID happened and shut us down, you know, the town administrator at the time protected two buildings a lot, which were the library and the senior center because of the vulnerable population. And you have to go back and remember the times when people didn't know if you touched a chair, if you were going to catch it or whatever. So that's what stopped a lot of what was going on there. And I, you know, at one point approached recreation and I guess they're recreation and safe place because they're in the same office. But I think recreation really runs those programs. So, you know, we're back in the summertime. We have a tent outside that I had a platform built. You can use it for classes, but they were busy doing other things. So I think for some reason, there's like talk out there that it's only seniors and nobody's allowed, which is not true. But it also has to be monitored and has to be, someone has to be in there because oftentimes things get damaged and there's no accountability for it. So I think however we bring all that stuff back, it has to be managed by someone. And it's been talked about, there always has to be a staff employee there, which again cuts into the budget if you don't have the funds.
If I may have a question?
Yes.
I think a few years ago at town, town meeting, we appropriated, I'm going to say about thirty thousand dollars to do a study to either whether it makes sense to continue to retrofit that building and essentially make it a senior center only or build new that is kind of a dedicated space for seniors that has, you know, the bathroom facilities that seniors could have easier access to and all of that. Appropriate door widths and widths and, you know, more meeting space rooms versus a large hall and all of that. I was just wondering, I know that that, I think, happened right before COVID hit.
It did.
And I didn't know if there had been any movement on looking at the options. Obviously, I, we have the conversation as far as we're not necessarily taking care of our buildings as it is. And I, and I hear that. I don't disagree. I also know that I feel we need more space for meetings for for the seniors, for recreation and safe place for the kids to have indoor space, families to have indoor space and even people that might not want to participate in council on the aging activities, but want to still have, participate in the recreation exercise classes or something. So I think that there is a larger need within the community to have more space. I don't know how that looks. So I was just curious, in my mind, having something that is kind of built or done with seniors in mind and the intent of space that is designed for seniors is, makes sense rather than trying to retrofit something. But if that's not the most economical or feasible, I don't know. I just know we had appropriated the money.
We appropriated the money for a study. We were, we had a committee that was going to go out and look at towns comparable to size and, you know, logistics of this town. And then it got shut down because of COVID.
Yeah.
I can tell you that I think there's, like, what a seniors need, I think, is very different. And people assume certain things. Before I got a job there, I had no idea it was even in the building. I had gone there with my kids for different things, recreation. And I honestly was one of those people who thought it was like an adult daycare center. I had no idea. And I think a lot of people have no idea. As far as space for seniors, any space you do as far as bathroom usage, handicap accessibility is going to be the same for anyone, whether they're a senior or a child, you know, wheelchair, whatever, it's going to be the same. As far as small spaces and thinking that we don't need a big room, they do need big rooms. Every senior center around here, Wes Boylston, I think, spent twelve million dollars, somewhere around there for theirs. Is similar. It's got a big space in the middle. It's just.
Right. And I thought, we had heard you say that you kind of have run out of space of the smaller rooms there also. So kind of looking, the town's growing, right? I mean, Anita just told us that we're at almost ninety five hundred. And that's a huge increase, even based off the managed growth study from a couple of years ago. I think that they were predicting, CMRPC was predicting this number like twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Like, we're growing fast. And we know we have fifty-five plus communities and everything being built as well. So I would imagine all the population needs across the ages are going to increase. And so I'm just trying to think of ways that we can continue to grow cohesively as a town and continue to service everybody and not, not continue to pit, you know, one group versus the other or whatever and give everybody what they need.
Right. I mean, I don't think all ages are increasing because what they're predicting is, and we've already hit it, that by two thousand twenty, we were gonna have more people over sixty than we did under twenty. We're at that point.
Yeah.
As far as the big space, I wish it was constructed differently. I've looked, I'm starting to look into soundproofing for everybody, even recreational classes because you can't hear in there. It's terrible. Um, that's why we lose some of the spaces because I could at least have some programming in there. These other centers use their big rooms for programming. We really can't, you, you can't hear.
And I know there, there used to be even a few, uh, you know, a few years ago, significant grants to fund, especially for senior centers. Not so much necessarily for recreation, but for senior center to help with construct, over, offset some of the construction. I haven't looked recently to see what's out there now post-COVID.
It, it's not as easy as you think. We had, well, actually Ruth's mother was the director many, many years ago. She had, I don't know, at the time, eight hundred thousand dollars committed. And then the town shot it down. They didn't wanna.
Secretary, somebody come visit the facility, somebody from the.
Secretary Channing thing.
Channing, yeah.
She did.
She came and visited the center, correct?
But, yeah, right. And we always read in the newspaper, you know, this center got this much money towards, it's one of those things. You have to apply for it, you know, if, we can have the idea, we can go to the rep, then the town administrator has to request it and it's kind of like what the money we got for the wood house. And we didn't put enough money in as a request, so we didn't get money to fix that. So it's, is it out there? Yes. May, might it be less now since COVID? I don't know. Um, it's just, it's a whole big process. And again, it's one of those things. Do we have time to write the grants? Do we have anybody that writes it for us? Do we?
So you had, you had mentioned the, the kitchen briefly, but you didn't talk about, cause there was two builders that contributed quite a bit to the seniors to expand that into more of a larger commercial kitchen, so.
For us, yeah. So we could have, do more with the meals. Like, for example, I will often, now often, will often do a, like a giveaway. We had an Easter dinner giveaway where you could get the whole dinner, but you had to still prepare it. With this kitchen, we'll be able to take some of that food, prepare it and actually distribute meals. Um, do a lot more in-house stuff with that. That money came from the CARES Act. Two builders did come forward so that it, all the labor was free. Um, the supplies were cost. And so it, we had, again, this tiny little galley kitchen that was.
Yeah, the work you guys did out of that small kitchen was amazing. You know, pancake breakfast and all this stuff. It was amazing, so.
So now, yeah, now it brings us to a, it's very nice. It's quaint. It's more like a country kitchen. You know, some of these other facilities, Wes Boylston, Holden, have huge. So we're not at that point, but we're certainly at a point where we're thankful and we can do the things we need to do.
I just have one more question. I know years ago when I was the liaison for Council on Aging, there'd been a conversation about the senior bus and everything and whether to try to continue partnering, going back to wa, partnering with Waukesha or Worcester or maybe partner with Mon, Monit, Monmouth, Monmouth, whatever.
Uh, yeah.
Um, I was wondering if there's, um, any transportation.
Transportation is always an issue. We are paired up with Elder Bus out of Charlton, which is part of the, um, the, the Worcester Transit. But the, the Monmouth is another region. So in other words, we use this region because that's where we're located. It only stretches so far. So unfortunately, you know, they'll go to Worcester, they'll go to doctor's appointments on, you know, I think it's one day now because they've cut that. But two days, you have to go between ten and two. So tell your doctor that, you know, you have to be out before that or we can't give you a ride home. The problem is, is other towns have more, um, they have their own. But that would mean the town, even if you got the van donated, you have to maintain it. So do you have a mechanic available to maintain it? We have to pay the driver. We have to insure the driver. You know, it's one of those, I don't know if it's a revolving account or some other that should fund itself, but you have to go through the initial expense and support the driver and the insurance and.
This is just all kind of thinking, you know, like I asked, he's got, you know, long-term thinking or just process-wise. Like, I know it was something that had been on the radar and there's not a good answer because it seems like here in Rutland, we're on the cusp, we're almost too far for Worcester and we're too far for Monmouth. So, so we're just.
Well, we're part of it. Right, we're Worcester.
Right, no, I know, but it's just.
Designate like a subcontractor.
Right, but we're just, it's still far, no matter what. We're twenty, thirty minutes from anywhere, right, in, in Rutland.
Well, I, I, I don't, I'm confused at what you're asking me. Like, why we can't get into one of those other regional transits?
No, I understand that we're part of Worcester, that that's what our region is. But we're also on the far side of Worcester, right? I mean, we're kind of on the outskirts of Worcester. So it's just, as far as where the region goes, we're probably one of the farthest parts that, that Worcester covers.
Okay.
I don't.
I'd have to look at that.
I don't know. I think.
The north, we're in the north region.
Right.
What they do is they go, you know, however many miles. So they might go thirty-two miles out in every direction and that's your area that they're gonna cover. And then they won't take you any farther than that. So it, I mean, it's definitely an issue. Um, but again, a lot of other municipal councils on aging have huge staff. So somebody might be dedicated to transportation and grants and, you know, um, we can only do so much of what we have. And we, we do the best we can. And I, I tell people all the time, we're the best volunteers of anyone because they're extremely dedicated.
Back to the ARPA funds. Now, you had proposed putting some of those funds towards a facility for rec, for additional space right in the center of town? You were looking at trying to get the group to look at that?
Suggest that because it's difficult. You have the kids in camp. What are they gonna do? Walk down the community center if they have a thunderstorm? But if we put up some kind of a building, cause even now, if it's thunder and lightning, you can't stay outside. You can stay outside in rain if you want, you know, if you had to. But it would be nice to have some kind of a structure that they could go in or do arts and crafts, whatever. And even use it for classes, whatever. It was all in one place. But again, we talked about it in the ARPA committee and it ran into, um, well, wait a minute, we can't even take the, we don't can't even take care of the buildings we have. We, they can't even heat the pool. How will they, how will they maintain another building? Well, again, like Tom said, it's programming. If you bring in the programming that will fund it, then, then you can take care of the building. I think, um, I think all around, we just need to make our money work for us, right?
Any other questions?
I wanted to thank you for all your volunteers. Also, I know throughout COVID, I've talked to some of your volunteers and they just said what a rewarding experience it was on their half also. Um, and just kind of how important it was to have that sense of outreach. And I know community members that really appreciated kind of having someone that knew what to do and help them through it because it wasn't easy, especially at the beginning. So.
Yeah. Well, thank you for saying that because I appreciate all of them.
And just, you know, I know you do a lot with the volunteers. So, thank you.
Anybody have any, anybody else have any questions? All right. Thank you. Town administrator.
Yes, sir. Just a couple of things. I did actually meet with the Historical Commission today. Um, I'm sure that you all know that the insurance claim was filed due to some structural deficiencies, roofing, rejoining the chimney and so on and so forth. What I was concerned about is, and I told them I would do some research, is there is some fear that the, um, claim will expire. So I, and I just found this out this afternoon, or actually this morning. So I did have a nice meeting with them. Told them that I would certainly look into it. I have to contact Beth, Tamika. I don't know if Tamika knows about that, but I've never heard of a claim expiring because there was a claim filed. And also, as you know, we did, um, recommend to the ARPA committee for some funds to go towards that building. So I just wanted to let everybody know that I will be looking into that to see what we can, we can take care of.
Do you know when the next meeting, the ARPA meeting?
It's after, it's the last Tuesday of the month.
And you won't be able to do anything till August anyway, right?
Well, like I said, as we have left, well, you got the, the, on the agenda of proposed projects. That money is still there.
Yeah.
Um, so we can certainly do that. But I wanna actually see where the, I don't wanna lose any money from the insurance claim either. So. But I will be looking at that. I just wanted to let the board know.
If I, if I may. Some chatter around town that I've heard is just because the Historical Society rents, I think, rents the wood studio. It, and the fire brigade rents the old firehouse. And the fire brigade has not been able to receive any town funds for their repairs. And so I think the argument with Historical Society, the wood house is it holds all of the town treasures and historical pieces. But there's chatter around town about that. So I just wanted to put it on your radar. Um.
Okay, thank you. But that is still, they do lease it, but it's still considered to be a town building, yes?
I think so. And I think also the fire brigade, the old firehouse is considered to be a town building. And they lease it. And like Marshfield is considered to be town field, but Little League leases it.
Okay.
You know, all of that kind of, and just kind of how all the different leases are managed. I think Little League has been very adamant that they want hands off. And that's been fine, I think.
Right.
Um, but between the, the buildings, there's been chatter around town.
I did ask about their agreement and they said it had expired several years ago when a new one wasn't done. So I have to look that up as well.
It may have. I honestly don't know. I know we recently did Marsh, the Marshfield one. Um, I don't remember doing, we didn't do Fire Brigade or Historical, did we? We did?
Yep, we did the Fire Brigade.
Yeah, it was like a ninety-nine year, right?
Yep.
Oh, but not recently. So it was probably.
Oh, yeah. Always like before they started putting all the stones in front of, in front of the building.
Yeah. But anyway, I don't know what the leases, I don't know where the leases stand. I don't, just so it's on your radar.
Okay. All right. Good, good information. Thank you.
I think what we is also, there are different leases and, and there's the equity part that I think is the chatter.
Okay. All right. I'll be looking.
And regarding the woods house, yes, Tamika, you might be able to find an email from, from Maya. Um, and there is somebody that Beth was in contact with and should probably be kept to the rest.
Okay.
He's okay extending it. And I apologize that I forgot about it during all the meeting and everything that we were doing, but I can't remember his name, but just a heads up to him is fine.
Okay. Good information. We'll, we'll look into it certainly. Hopefully we can get some, some stuff done quick. I also have, uh, the question came up about a sealer of weights and measures, um, the services. And I just received this, um, as everybody, I'm sure everybody knows, IT, we had a problem with this morning, so it was down. So I just received this today. Um, and it's not on the agenda for the board to vote, approve or sign. However, the town administrator's office can sign it. Um, it is a state contract award. It's for twenty-five hundred dollars. And it's supposed to be for a calendar year. And I don't know why. I can't explain why it's so behind, but this is dated May twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. So I can only figure that for the last, um, four months, you haven't had a sealer. So I don't know. I can certainly send this off to everybody for review. It looks to be all in order with, with me. But I can certainly send it off to you to read it before I sign, unless the chair of the board, um, wants to sign it. Otherwise, it can be signed by the town administrator.
I felt like we had gotten an email a while ago that, that it was all set. I'm just, I'm.
I do too. I thought, I thought.
That it was off the state, it was a state person or it was off this, I thought it was a state person to do it.
Through Ron, right?
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you recall anything?
Exactly. Well, so from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the divisions have standards. So it is a state contract price.
So they're contracting with the division?
Yeah.
And they will have people come out and take care of it. But I guess my concern is twenty-five hundred dollars, does it, there's no end date. So is it one year from May twenty-second?
He said it's calendar year.
No, it's a calendar year. So that's what I'm concerned about. So we're getting seven, seven months out of a contract. So I would like to look into that.
But I do think we already addressed it to some.
I don't, I don't think that this ever came through until just today, right?
I remember some sort of communication.
Something from Ron.
He was gonna go with the state.
Right.
Yes.
I got it today.
Alright, so, so we were already aware of it. So I guess.
We found the name.
Has objection. We want, we can just allow the town administrator.
Yeah, I, I forwarded it to you, but I can do that again.
Oh, yeah, I didn't get it.
Okay, yeah, sure. I just didn't reply to everybody. So it was a different email. Do you think that everybody, until it was finalized, needed to be in the mail yet? I think there's other offices and town that were asking.
So I mean, obviously it's a required service that we need to have available. So I don't know what the pleasure of the board is. But I do think that we, we had already looked at something a while ago. So I'm not, I, I have no objection to going forward with it unless the board has any objection. I know we don't have it on the agenda, but it's not.
And that was what was budgeted. I think that's what was, the dollar amount was, that was budgeted for that position, right? I mean.
I haven't seen that dollar amount budgeted. And as I said, we didn't get our system up till late, late during the day today. So.
Yeah.
And this just didn't come on today's date from the state. So I was kind of surprised to see it pop up.
Yeah. Like I said, I, I'm searching my email. I'm not finding it right now. I remember getting an email about it. Um, so it's not a surprise.
Right. No, I, I recall something on it as well, so.
I guess it's a surprise that it wasn't already taken care of, but not like.
I thought that the email that was sent out was basically saying it was all set.
Right.
That's my, my understanding, but I, I don't remember how long ago.
That we joined in with another town.
Just knowing what, yeah, you, you might have. I don't, I can't explain the deficiency for four months or what happened.
I don't recall whatever taking form of action.
Yeah, I don't think it was, I think it was an email that he was just gonna do.
Already taking care of it. I don't think we had to vote on anything at the time.
I, I think that he, cause we were gonna try to hire somebody. It was a job posting for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ron checked. He could get this contract with the division through the state. Um, and that's the last I heard of it, that it was going to be twenty-five hundred, just like we budgeted. And it would be just as easy to do it this way. Um, but I, I'm right to make, I don't remember any action being taken. Just a comment being made during probably town admin updates.
I mean, I guess if we approve the budget, we approve the amount. I guess it's a matter of whether we allow the town administrator to sign it.
Right. And I think, I'm trying to go back. I think that that's one of the positions. Skip, do you remember that we officially, as select board officially appoint? I think we appoint.
It's on the list.
Right. It's on the, the appointment list. So it is something that we appoint, but I think it's generally building or town administrator high, you know.
The person, yeah, the person's name previously was Edward.
Seedler or something?
Yes.
This is, this is a James, somebody?
The only thing is, so if it's, it's budgeted for FY twenty-three, but the contract is coming two months before we're getting to FY twenty-three.
It's a calendar.
Yeah. How is that?
I think there's a lot, yeah, there's a lot of questions to ask and any information. I don't believe anybody was interested in appointment, Leah. Is that why this went out to bid? This is just what I'm being told. Does this actually go out by posting or for bid? And this was the state contract low bid?
I, I think, I.
I think that there was no interest and then Ron found that we can just go with the state. That was his recommendation, we just go with the state.
Because even I think the electrical or one of the other inspection services that we appoint, Ron still brought, told us that he was gonna hire this person. And I don't know if we ever actually formally appointed them or not.
Well, we allow him to hire people.
But when it's an appointment, we still have to appoint, right? I think, Tamika?
Things, gas, weights and measures.
I don't disagree conceptually. I can try to find the email and forward it along with you.
Please, please. The only thing I think I questioned out of this whole contract is the fact that we're paying an annual rate of twenty-five hundred dollars for seven months.
Right.
And how many places in town get scales?
Scales, you know, gas stations, delis, I mean, they gotta, they have to check their accuracy.
I think it's also cash registers.
Yeah, you're right, it is.
Anything that scans barcodes, I think.
So, okay, I will, I'll look into it, Mr. Chairman, and that's all I have.
Um, update on the accountant?
Oh, sure. There was one more thing. Um, yes, the accountant, um, accepted the position. Becky has the paperwork in order for her. And her scheduled start date is June first.
So there's not gonna be much, any overlap with Dan or is Dan willing?
We're hoping for, um, Dan, Dan's been great for as long as I've known him. He did certainly offer his services to walk. He did certainly offer his services to walk her through certainly the, the end of fiscal, getting into the beginning of next. Um, and I did mention to some about possibly having a transition period. Don't know how long that can be, but we have to look into that. But um, you'd be very satisfied with her, she's a very, very good lady.
And municipal experience, right?
Oh, yes, definitely, from many towns, yes, yes.
Any update on the secret, the executive assistant secretary?
Were you going to say any um, updates on the town administrator?
Well, that's going to be next, but.
Yes, okay, see, you're reminding me of all these updates. Um, Tamika is now very generous. She's working in the position of executive administrative assistant town administrator.
Congratulations.
So we are, we're working that out and she's actually very helpful. I mean, I don't have to tell, certainly Carol knows that what it's been like up there without anyone. But Tamika's always been available, she certainly knows the drill. Glad to have her on board for the hours she could give, and we hope that can expand. And I'm sure it will. Um, and then as, as time goes on, we'll have hopefully Tamika and then a, a part-timer in the office. But that'll be for the next upcoming budget season and not, not really discussed right now, but that's, that's where we are.
I think that's, can we put a pin in that for future conversations when, you know, just how I ask these guys about future needs and everything is kind of the, the amount, um, the amount of work that the office has and realistically should be staffed as. Just, it doesn't have to be, you know what I mean? Thank you. Congratulations, Tamika.
I think us are congratulated.
All right, anybody have any other questions for Gary?
Nope.
All right. Next on the agenda, class two dealer license for Chris Central, and that we have voted on that at the last meeting.
So is this just a motion to sign?
Yes.
Waived.
Whitman seconds.
Any discussion?
Clock eye.
Galvin eye.
Benoit eye.
Whitman eye.
And Nichols eye.
Can just confirm that on the license, it does say no vehicles allowed on the property because that was a part of the.
Yes.
The thirty-nine or what?
Well, just before that, I just want to again thank Tamika and Carol for hel- and Gary for everybody handling the whole big turnover and transition through the administrative office. And, and it was a lot of work. And I know Carol and Tamika worked very closely together to figure out what was going on, and I appreciate all their efforts, so.
It doesn't have to stop.
Where have you been? I haven't seen you.
All right, so uh, my favorite part, reorganization of the board. Vote to appoint a chair, vice chair, and clerk.
So I'd like to make a motion as a slate. Carol Benoit as chair, Lyndon Nichols a co-chair, and Tom Galvin as clerk.
Do we want to do it as a slate, or do we just?
I mean, somebody could say no, I mean, it's all up to them. But let's get this thing done and get it over with. I mean, I don't know about everybody else, but.
The board's fine, I'll second it, if the board's fine with it. As long as people are agreeable.
Does Tom know what, does Tom know what a clerkship is?
Huh?
Does Tom know what he's agreeing to?
Well, yeah, he's going to be a clerk, he's going to sign all those papers.
Signatures.
All the licenses and papers for the police officers, the fire department.
I don't know, I, I think as the new member, I, I think I'd rather see Leah.
I think the clerk is a good.
Good place to start from.
No, I was just.
It doesn't do that much.
I was going to say, honestly, the clerk is a great position for a new select board member. It's not a whole lot of additional work. It's signing it, like you'll assign all the appointment cards and everything. Um, and then minutes if Tamika or someone else is not here.
Yeah, if you guys are comfortable with it.
I mean, I think it's a good introductory.
I think you had to do minutes like twice and they were within two days.
And they needed, did you get one of those cards?
No, no, yeah.
You didn't?
No.
We didn't get them as select board.
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah, yeah.
You should have gave you a card.
Yeah.
We didn't get them, we didn't get them.
I did get a card.
I did, way back when.
Yeah, well, you're a card artist.
You're a card carrying member.
I mean, all right, so I guess we have a second. Any, enough, I guess that was the discussion. So any other discussion?
I mean, I'm fine with it, I just think that it's not a lot of change as far as chair and co-chair. And is it going to be co-chair or is it going to be vice chair?
Oh, it's vice chair.
No, no, but how do, how do you guys anticipate it?
All right, so.
You know.
Play, play with the words. I mean, that's, I'm all right, we don't want to go there.
Well, no, I mean, that was my philosophy, that's the way I wanted to.
I'm wondering from an operations perspective.
Doesn't make any difference. She's the chair and he's his, and Lyndon is his assi- her assistant, his assistant. Her, whatever. I mean, co-chair, chair, hmm, whatever, doesn't make any difference. She's second in line. And this man right here is third in line.
Right, that's fine.
So what, why do we got to make a big to-do about anything? And yeah, I'm crabby, I am.
I'm crabby today.
Any other discussion? All right, I'll ask for a vote.
Clock eye.
Galvin eye.
Benoit eye.
Whitman eye.
There you go.
We have a, two, do we have two common vic licenses to approve? Um, we were a little confused about them because both of them, we had signed, I think, alcohol licenses for in December. Um, but these are the common vic ones, so they're Bedrock Country Club.
Well, Carol, if I may.
Yeah.
I did, you know, check the house, the board did vote to approve the common vic licenses for both of these.
They were common vics?
Yep.
Okay.
So we just signed, right?
Okay, so we're just going to vote to sign them, thank you very much.
I make a motion to sign.
Second.
Roll call.
Clock eye.
Galvin eye.
Nichols eye.
Whitman eye.
Benoit eye.
And um, we have a one-day liquor license request from the police, Rutland Police K nine Foundation. Um, is it still going to be up, or is it going to be up to Glenwood area again? Does anybody?
Yes, it is, yep, it is. Have you received Rutland Police?
Thank you.
Yes, it is.
Is it just seven slots?
Correct, add the application and the certificate of insurance with me.
Yeah, we have, we had everything. So if I can get a motion.
I make a motion that we approve a one-day liquor license for the Rutland Police K nine Foundation for June fourth and waive all, any and all fees.
Second.
Roll call.
Clock eye. Galvin eye.
Nichols eye.
Whitman eye.
Benoit eye. Oh, I didn't sign that, here.
Um, and now we have the ratification of reappointment of the finance committee members. Um, both Ted Purcell and Pete O'Malley have agreed to be reappointed for the three-year terms. They will expire in twenty twenty-five. Um, and these appointments are appointed by the town and, town moderator who did that town meeting and then we ratify them here.
Show moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Clock eye. Galvin eye.
Nichols eye.
Whitman eye.
Benoit eye.
Excuse me, select board, do you not need these documents?
We have copies of them, I think.
His copy's already in the office, I believe, so, yeah. So you need to come here for nothing, right?
Many copies of these.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Matt.
I am, yes, sir. How'd you feel?
And we have a letter, uh, planning grant, planning assistant grant that needs a signature. And could you tell us more about that, Gary?
I can certainly try. This was um, approved obviously by the planning board. The monies of that have been approved. Phase one and phase two are works in progress. So this is phase three, and as you can see in the letter, it, it kind of spells out what they're looking for in phase three. So it will be, um, you know, we'll have a local match and in-kind services um, that will provide really, so no monetary exchange or payout for this, this part of the phase. So what they generally do is as, as we or the planning board um, receives invoices, they forward it off to CMRPC for payment. Um, so they never really, they don't, any state agency, anyone that I've dealt with in the past doesn't, doesn't really put the, give you the money to have to put in an account and then pay bills out of. So it's just like a Complete Streets or Easy Streets or um, all of the other grant programs available. So this is, uh, I did talk to David about this, this is all approved, ready to get the other two, obviously, the other two phases closed out, we started on this one, so we can have our master plan in place.
So I make a motion to, for the chair to sign um, this, the letter of support for the planning assistant grant.
Second.
Um, I, I do have a question, and this is where I was asking you about. So the last paragraph, Gary, says the town will provide a hundred and, one thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars in local match and one thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars of in-kind services. So it does sound like there is a.
There aren't some administrative fees associated with it, so, yes.
But this, you said that the planning board already has.
They, they're paying for it.
The planning board has already been budgeted for it, so.
I just.
Probably someone else is paying for it, was it?
We'll take your word for it. Um, roll call.
Clock eye. Galvin eye.
Nichols eye.
Whitman eye.
Benoit eye.
Goals and objectives. Any meetings of the Economic Development Commission Committee?
I have reached out to that Economic Development Plan Committee, I just haven't, I just haven't gotten a response. So I don't even know when their next meeting was, but I guess the easy ways to look at agenda items and.
They just emailed today and um, they set up a meeting, they scheduled a meeting for this coming Wednesday, maybe at seven.
Next Wednesday at seven?
This Wednesday at seven, it's in the library.
Good. Now I know, okay, thank you.
And he's. Somebody else in this position used to attend them.
Right, but you didn't get your email today, right? So it just came out today?
So it just came out today. Uh, I noticed that there um, is like a little bit of breakdown in communication with that particular committee, and sometimes things kind of come in piecemeal and they're not quite sure of the procedure. Um, so today I was asked to help set up the Zoom meeting for them and then they posted the agenda.
Okay.
Um, so I apologize for that you weren't in that room, but yeah, they did it once today.
So you, Tamika, to you, do you take minutes for that?
No, um, the board does not have a budget, so the um, one of the board members takes the minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, they have a, a secretary, I think.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then just close it. Oh, that's nice. Um, the website, nothing has been done recently on that, the boards and commissions. Um, I expect that we'll know a lot more. Uh, thank you, Tamika, for reaching out. That was one of the things I was striving to do, so thank you, thank you, thank you for reaching out. Um, she's reached, she's gone through all the lists, reached out to everybody that is expiring. Um, the term is expiring, they're not expiring, and um, see if.
And we are generating a little bit of new interest in some vacancies. And I'm not sure, you know, if it's just board members talking to people in the community, but I do have somebody interested in AdCom, um, and potentially somebody for their own Board of Appeals.
Excellent, excellent. So it'll be important, you and I can talk about it if you want to, but that we have.
Yes.
And I'd like to try to get as many done in, in one night as we can.
Through the chair, so is, is that still on the sign? Or maybe it'd be, maybe we should revive it if, just before we do the appointments and, and.
We should do it now because we've reached out to people.
It was on the sign, but.
Or change it.
Yeah, or change it and say that there'll be, you know, appointment's going to be made in June or something different to get, address some attention to it.
Yeah, we can do that.
Gary looked very interested in that. Uh, human resources, uh, if, I think you and I both heard something new. I didn't know that we had six policies in place that everybody was supposed to do, um, so that was good to hear.
Well, I knew that there were policies, but I thought they were actually trainings. I didn't know that it was just a sign-off kind of thing.
Yeah, um, and the annual budget and financial futures is forever and ever and ever. Um, I don't think we have anything new to talk about tonight with that.
As I wish to the chair, if I may, just with the financial futures, of course, none of us really know about that, the annual budget. Um, I requested through the board or told the board that I was, no, I shouldn't say told, I asked the board um, if it was okay, and, and as far as I'm concerned, to get the budget started early, um, like we used to do um, years back. Um, I'm very concerned about the financial futures and, and Harry to you, and also certainly the board. I'm very concerned about relying on ARPA monies to get us through it. Um, so a big concern of mine, so I just, that's why I want to start the process early. I don't mean right now, we can start June first.
Two weeks?
Yeah.
But we should get it in uh, early. We should be looking at end of October, November, so we can get all this, all this settled on. And, and we should really, through the ARPA committee and others, really decide what we're going to put this money into to help us be stable. That's all, so those, only my comments, thank you.
Um, I note that I have my budget book to bring back, and so if anybody either wants to drop it off at the, at the annex and they'll be shredded, shredded, um, or bring it here and maybe Gary can bring them back and be shredded.
They don't have to be shredded, that's, that's public information.
Okay.
No, but that, that's a lot of work for somebody, I don't, I don't think it's.
Recycled.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I don't know, did you really mean somebody was going to sit and shred them all?
Um, I think they have a, I think they have a retain, a bucket that they just.
I wouldn't put the work into it because it's not confidential information.
I think that it's.
And I was going to do a page at a time.
Um, is there anything else?
I just, if we can just mention through the chair, uh, just a reminder that our next meeting is going to be on a Tuesday because of Memorial Day, so if you're going to remember.
And I will not be here for it.
Yes. Motion adjourned?
Yeah, yeah, it's okay.
All in favor?
Aye. I, I guess Lyndon.